Thursday, June 21st, 2018. Members present are Mark McKeever, Kevin Myers, Andrew Shock, and myself. Besire City Joint Regular Committees meeting was called to order by myself at 6:00 PM. First up, order of business, we have public participation. Does anybody have anything they would like to address the council this evening?
We're going to turn it over first big here to Terry. Terry's going to do introduction for us.
Okay. Terry?
Yeah. Oh, he left?
I think he went to the rest.
Okay. He's going to talk a lot.
He's going to talk a lot.
Talk, there he is!
It was a lot of them.
I think I'd be best if everybody, if they want to see the screen.
I think we're all going to move back that way so we can all see the...
Yep. We have with us tonight Ed Sprague from Practical Solutions. He's going to give us another update on our towers. Remember, a couple sessions ago, we had a guy from Sue S come in and give us a presentation. This is another presentation, basically a different quote to get a price on what we're doing. So, I'm going to turn it over to Ed.
You want one of them up there? You know, move that way.
No, I don't see it.
Are you sure you can see good enough?
I said, I'm good.
You guys can see it? Okay.
They went to light off a little.
Hey, you want the light off? I'll get that.
Can you set your paper?
Just a couple, don't kill them all.
You want a flashlight?
I'm a grizzly. Yeah, I'm a grizzly.
Yeah, that's good.
As long as I can read my notes.
Oh, Ed, you can just be like me and get in the dark all the time.
Yeah, like all of us. I get going on Rabbit Trail a lot of times and I forget to even talk about where I came from. I know Terry was worried about getting my name wrong and he got, so he took a business card. He got that right, but he got the company's name wrong. And he had the business card.
What did I say?
He said Practical Solutions. It's Practical Inspections.
Oh.
And...
I can't read your writing.
And I can leave some other cards if you'd like one. But Practical Inspections is a family-owned, Ohio-based company. And we are partnering with Water Utilities across Ohio, Michigan, and Indiana. Basically to help you, say you cut your mixing, we install tank mixers. We designed a system for that. And then also to reduce your maintenance costs by over 50% compared to our competitors. We don't work on tanks other than install mixers and we do some repair work. But as far as painting tanks, what we do is we inspect tanks and write specs for them and help in the bidding process. And then we inspect the work as it's being done and all of that. Just recently, we inspected, we just did a visual inspection on your two tanks just to get a general understanding of what they need. And really, the more you know about your tanks and what they do and what they need, it's really good for everybody except any contractors that are trying to take advantage of you. So, that's really what we try to do is help people understand what their tanks need, when they need it, and all of that. So, before I get any further down that rabbit trail, start. Actually, it's kind of a brief, a pretty brief inspection report. So, I'm just going to go through and read it, I guess. And I hate doing that, but that's what I'm going to do. So, on June 6th, 2018, the direction of City Besire, a visual inspection was performed on a 500,000 gallon hydrophone located on Woodrow Avenue. Purpose of the inspection was to determine the condition of the protective coatings, structural integrity of the tank, and the most cost-effective means of maintaining the tank and supporting structure. And we did inspect both tanks. They're both in almost identical condition. One has better gloss than the other, but they're actually both in very good condition. I mean, they're in the condition you would expect for, and I'm not sure, how long ago were they painted?
I think in 2003. One of Jeff...
I think one was done in 10.
10?
I think, if I remember right what Donnie told me.
Okay. So, you might go...
And the age of the, you know, that's about what, we saw about what we would expect to see. A paint job or a coating system, anymore than not just paint jobs, it's pretty high-tech coatings and stuff, but should last anywhere from 15 to 20 years if they're installed correctly. The surface prep is the main thing. They're done in the proper weather conditions and all that. There's a lot of varnish on them. Anyways, the general condition of the Woodrow Avenue tank, protective coatings on the exterior have good adhesion. Coatings are in fair condition. There's minimal gloss retained on the exterior. I think this is the one that maybe was painted earliest.
Jeff, tell me.
And so, it had less gloss than the other, than the other one. But the, inside the inspection, there were no structural deficiencies. The paint wasn't failing anywhere. Now, the wet interior, that's the part up top that holds the water. The wet interior, which is really the most critical thing because if your fail, coatings fail there, it'll start really doing damage to the tank. If they fail on the outside, it just looks bad and it's going to take a long time for it to really do any damage to the tank. So, protective coatings on the interior wet, or the wet interior of the tank are in fair condition. There are isolated coating failures on various weld seams. And we'll see some pictures of that. Large failure areas are noted on the access tube. And we'll see pictures of that. The dry interior, majority of the dry interior, that's just the big stem that holds the tank up. Majority of the coatings on the dry interior are in good condition with good adhesion. However, there are isolated areas where the coating has failed and the substrate has corroded. And then, that. And again, the exteriors are in really good shape. We don't have paint popping off anywhere. Couple little nicks here, here and there. Sometimes on some weld seams, there might be a little spot. Here's right down at the foundation. The foundation and the grout is all in excellent condition. That's the grout between the steel plate and the foundation there. That's all in good condition on both tanks. This is the overflow pipe and the screen that protects it from predators getting in there and stuff. It's doing its job, but it's not, not something how I would install it. And also, there's no, usually the EPA wants you to have a flap, a flapper on there that opens and closes, and then also a screen. The other tank has one, but this one doesn't have one. This here is just an adhesion test, and that's actually good. There's very little of the top coat that comes off. You do that scratch test, put a special tape on there, pull it. And so, the adhesion of the coatings are good. This here is the roof vent. And you can see it's protecting the tank from entrance of, you know, birds and bats and stuff like that. But now, the standard is to have a pressure vacuum vent, which it has pallets in there that if there's a vacuum in the tank, it won't quite collapse the tank. The pallet will lift and allow air in around the screen, same way it was depressurized. Actually, depressurized from the inside isn't as harmful to a tank, but it doesn't take a whole lot of vacuum to actually buckle the tank. So anyways, now all tanks have a pressure vacuum vent. This here is just the roof, the manways. That's a 30, 30-inch access, which is good. Up until recently, I would just have a 24-inch manway, which was fine when I, 20 years ago for me. But it's a little tougher for me to get through them now. This here is just the aerial beacon. You can see they just had some bummer strap pulling that. As you can see, that's fairly tall above the tank, and that catches a lot of wind and could easily, that could easily end up breaking. That should have new stainless steel guy wires.
What'd you say that was?
It's the aircraft boarding light beacon. So, that should have new cables. We took some mill readings. It's got just about what we would expect to see for having been painted twice. It was painted one of the brand-new and then overcoated once. It had about 15 mils, 14 to 16 is what we found. Here's the, the...
And what should it have as far as...
That's, that's right about where it should be. When you paint it, have maybe three to five mils of primer and then three to five mils of top coat. And it's been painted twice, so it'd be right in that ballpark. Okay, this here, the access tube, that's just the tube that goes up through the water. And it seems like every time a new tank gets built, they come to the site, that's already painted. So then, when they put it in, you know, when they install it in the build of the tank, it just always gets overlooked by the inspector because it's not a place where they go and have to, like the rest of the tank has all these weld seams everywhere. So, the inspectors inspecting that when they're welding, sandblasting it and painting it and all that, this just always gets missed. So, we see this a lot in, in tanks with an access tube where they just, it came to the site, already painted, they just put shock primer in it and a light coat to finish. And it's not a real, it's not something critical. For that to wait three, five years, it's not really going to get any worse. It probably looked like that, you know, surprising it didn't get painted again the last time the tank was painted, but those were original coatings. This here's your standing to the bottom, looking up. You're looking up at the bottom of the tank inside. And there again, that part of the tank seems like it, it just always gets, it just doesn't get painted as well as the rest of the tank because I think just because inspectors aren't paying that close of attention to that. It's not outside where it takes a lot of weather and it's not inside the submerged part of the tank. So, anyways, we just see, we see that a lot. So, and again, that's not critical. That'll stay like that for many years. It's not out in the weather. It's not corroding at any aggressive rate or anything like that. But a lot of people will show you pictures like that to tell you, hey, your tank's going to fall down. This is just the catwalk up top. Looks bad, but it's actually in, in pretty good shape. There's a couple spots where there's some corrosion. That's mostly just dirt. But there's just a weld seam, one of the few places we found that the coating failed. This here is standing on that catwalk, looking down at the condensate floor. That's all in pretty good condition. Hardly any coating failure there. This here's inside. It's hard to get a good picture through the water and that. But there's really very little sediment. I don't know when the last time the tank was washed, but it's not, I mean, to a lot of people, they look at that, they go, oh, that looks awful, it's filthy. That's really not bad at all unless the tank was cleaned last week. Here's a spot, this is inside the wet. That's the access tube that comes up through the water and you climb right through that tube, come out onto the roof. And that there is really, I think I have another picture of it here, yeah, right here. This is the weir box. That's the overflow pipe. So, when your tank overflows and reaches this level, goes into there. And this is that access tube again that you climb up through. That's most likely caused by ice. When, when you get a lot of ice in your tank and that is going, the level is fluctuating, that ice is going up and down and wears those coatings. And, but that there, as you can see, it's not at that level very often. Here's, this here's the walls inside the tank. There's just a few pinholes in the coatings. The coatings are really in really good shape on the inside of the tank. It's typical to see that. Actually, those rust stains, there's a tiny, tiny little pinhole in there and that stain just grows, so it looks way worse than it actually is.
A question, how, how much water is generally kept in the tank? How high does it go? Does it ever go to like to the top of the tank or is it?
Is the operator there?
I think that's a Terry question, huh?
No.
Okay.
Well, no. They don't get up that high. They don't keep it that high.
Okay.
Yeah.
In most, most places, it depends on, in the summertime, you know, it may be cut as full as possible. In the wintertime, a lot of times you lower the level just to, so you can have a lot more movement through the tank. The more movement through the tank, the less ice you have in there.
Would, excuse me, Ed, would a mixer keep that ice from forming in there?
Yes.
Okay.
We'd be happy to talk to you about that too.
Keep going.
Actually, there's a couple of different types of mixers. Some just mix, they just mix the water, keep it from, keep it from stratifying and that. And then, we also, we designed an aeration system for THM removal, which kind of accomplishes both. This here is the, the pit piping. It's all in really pretty good shape. I doubt if it's ever been repainted and it's really in pretty good condition. And that's that. When we do all these things in Rabbit, if we come and we do a complete washout, a drain tank washout inspection, which I would recommend for these tanks in maybe two years, and then you can really assess when you want to, I'd say, within three to five years, these tanks need to be painted. You could do one tank one year and then another one the following year. Or a lot of times, if you put two tanks out to bid at the same time, sometimes it's pretty attractive for contractors, you know, to be able to mobilize to one town with two tanks so you get some pretty competitive bidding like that. But anyways, if we did a full, a full drain tank inspection, we, we would work on some budget estimates to figure out exactly, or not exactly how much, but get an idea of what it's going to cost. What we did do is put in the prices on these things because they should more than likely be addressed soon. I put there immediately. It's not like it's some emergency or something, but they should be done. And this is going to sound a little bit like a, maybe a commercial or a sales pitch here, but we do this kind of work. We do fabrication, obviously with the mixing systems, we fabricate all of that, build those, install those. So, that's all work that, that we do. And a lot of times, we go in and do this kind of work before the tank goes out to bid for painting. And the reason we do that is because there's a lot of tank contractors out there who might be excellent painters, but you don't want them fixing your tank. So, we just eliminate that and that way, when we put the tank out to bid, all they're bidding on is a, is a paint job. And it just simplifies and everything. And obviously, it gives us work and we like that. Again, these are just all things that we would fill in if we did a drain tank inspection. And then, when I came the first time and met with Jeff and Terry, I had to look at his name to make sure I didn't get named wrong. We came to talk about these maintenance contracts. There's a lot of contractors out there now that they all offer these maintenance contractors. They say, we'll take care of everything for you. You don't have to bid anything out. You don't have to hire inspectors. You don't have to, we just take care of your tank forever and all you have to do is write us a check every year and you don't have to worry about it. So, anyways, a lot of people are looking at that. It sounds good. And I suppose there are instances where it is a good thing. My personal opinion is that it's like a really high interest credit card for people that have a budget money for, for maintenance. This is an actual, these are actual numbers. This isn't something I dreamt up. These are actual numbers. City Coast here was, they had a company dump and give them numbers for a maintenance agreement. Years one through five, it was going to cost them $120,291. And I don't read them all, but you can see, over 15 years, it would cost them $865,745 to maintain that tank. So, after I talked to the city and gave them my opinion, they opted to competitive bid the tank. The actual cost to paint the tank, and they had paid us the first year, it was somewhere on, and I wish I would have itemized this even more, but it was about $230,000, somewhere in there. And so, this here actually reflects another 15% for administration and engineering and, and inspection, the initial inspection while the contractor was doing the work. So, we wanted to include that to make, make this apples to apples. We didn't want to make it look like they were paying way less. They were paying way less. Then, there's a thousand dollars for inspections, years two through 15. That's, for a lot of our clients, we get on their tank every year, make sure all the vents are good, overflows, just check out the sanity there, integrity of the tank, the tank, make sure nothing is failed. And then, here you can see the cost per year to maintain, that's one of your tanks. Well, I don't know, your prices would be different on, on all of this, but this is just a comparison. This is a 500,000 gallon multi-light tank. Your tanks are what's called a hydrocoater or a fluided column tank. They have more surface area, so they cost more to paint. But anyways, so this is the actual savings to the city. And this is based on 15 years. Oftentimes, we see tanks, and I, within 50 miles of here or 100 miles of here, I could take you to 30 tanks, probably more than that, 40 tanks, that their coating systems, they put them out to bid, they paint them. And other than inspections and regular washouts, they haven't touched them for 18 to 20 years. And, and now, you know, they're in that cycle where they paint their tanks every 18 to 20 years. And this is an actual cost savings over the 15-year period. Your tanks, let's just say for instance, you painted your tanks this year and the last 20 years, that's $50,000 a year to maintain a tank. But as you can see, like I said, this is based on 15 years. If we actually get 20 years out of that, that saving is actually higher because you're still paying them. Here, you only pay here and then a thousand dollars a year for the next 20 years. Anyways, I think that's all we got. You got any questions?
How much is that total? I can't see the number.
We can't see the number up here.
Oh, okay. The total to maintain the tank under the maintenance contract was $865,745. The actual cost, what it cost because they went to bid, including the inspections and washouts and that, is $275,700. That's what it actually cost them. But here's where they get you. They say, you know, you don't have the money to paint your tank. It really needs it right now. You just pass this, we'll take care of everything. And then you pass this again for the next two years. So, in the first, right here, in the first five years, you spent enough to paint your tank three times.
Or do both.
Hmm?
Or do both of them.
Or do both of them. Right. So, you know, I hate to sound like I'm on the attack, but it just kind of irritates me though. And I know some, some places that have gotten into maintenance contracts and just found out it was a bad deal. The other thing is, and not all companies are the same. There's some good companies out there that do great work, but a lot of them, you know, the tank industry, I've been doing this since 1972.
And we have pictures of some of your work.
That's right. I, I took down the tank right over here, a couple blocks from here, 20-some years ago.
Quick question for you, Ed.
Yes, sir.
I know before, when we had the presentation from the, the maintenance contract people and everything, one of the big things that he made a point of is the fact that, you know, the competitive bidding process, sometimes you may get a contractor in and, you know, five, six years down the road, things start failing, not working properly, and then, oh, well, you know, that, you're on your own at this point.
Yeah.
Do you know, is there any guarantees that can come with these other companies?
Typically, and this has always been the case, that most contractors, they guarantee to work for a year. And we have had some, there's been a few engineers who have written into the specs that they get a two-year guarantee. And kind of the philosophy behind that was, even if a bad paint job will last a year. But here's the thing with that, from my perspective, is, is crucial that you have good inspections. And there's a lot of qualified inspect, tank coatings inspectors out there, but they're not used to being on water towers. They don't know what to look for there. And that's where we come in. Again, we have probably 80 tanks that we take care of that they consistently go 18 to 20 years between paint jobs. Now, the other side of that is, he's correct. You can have a failure, but let's say something happens where something gets painted over that shouldn't have, and five years down the road, we come to do a washout inspection and there's something failed. Then, you're on your own with that. But with that kind of a savings,
Right.
you can afford to fix a problem here and there, and we've had it happen.
I guess another question, real quick.
Yeah.
Being that you do the yearly inspections on a lot of these tanks, you said you maintain roughly a year. Is that something that you have caught before it has failed, and they have come back and corrected?
Oh, yeah. A good contractor, you know, they'll know if it's their fault or not.
Okay.
And that's another thing, the bidding process, you know, we work hand in hand. The keys are having a good spec that they can't argue with, you know? You have to have a good spec to follow, and we do our best to get, we solicit good contractors. A lot of times, you'll get, you know, you can't stop people from bidding, and sometimes, we get contractors that aren't our favorites. And some are just not good contractors, but that's why we're there every day. We do what they call whole-point inspections typically. That's where we have to see all, any surface before it's painted, we have to see it, check that the blast is correct, that it's clean, check the badge numbers on the paint, check the weather conditions, all that kind of stuff that, you know, that have a bearing on the life of the coating system.
There was also, during the last presentation that we had, there was a big discussion about the permits required by the Ohio EPA, and who files them, how they get filed, and all that kind of thing. Is that something that you offer, or is that something that you?
Yeah, that's what, that's where this comes in. We get on your tank every year, we give you a report, and we just put together one of the water utilities. They got 18 tanks in their system. The EPA came in, and they just did their, what is it, every two years or three years, they do the survey of your system.
I think it's every year.
Oh, it's every year?
Yeah.
Okay. But anyways, they have a report that shows every tank has been inspected, what kind of condition it's in, and all of that. That whole thing with the EPA Asset Management Program is still kind of in the works, and we've been in touch with the Ohio Rural Water Association. They're actually going to be putting out a thing, kind of a guideline or a template for you to follow with that. So, I don't think anybody knows exactly what to do, but it's not a real big deal. You just have to do what they want you to do, and basically, it's just know that your tank, the tanks are in good condition.
Well, we're doing that now.
Yeah, we're doing that now, yeah.
We're already doing, where is it?
The other two tanks, and which one was worse, do you think?
I think the north tank.
Do you want to flip on the lights?
And that's only because the, it just has less gloss, but they're both in about the same condition. They're both really in good shape, you know? And again, we, our recommendation is that we come in, or someone comes in in two years, and does a full washout inspection. At that time, you're probably determined, okay, we need to put these out to bid for next year. And it's always good to put your tanks out to bid in the, you know, in the fall, because that's when contractors are finishing up their year, they're trying to fill their schedules for the next year. So, they're, you know, they're hungry, or they're looking for a good job. So, the pricing that you do, that really makes a difference on what kind of bids you get.
Yes, sir.
You said, you believe we need to take action within three to five years?
Yeah, I would, yeah. Again, I mean, they're really in good shape, and so, you just keep an eye on if you see some areas, and you're bound to see a few areas here and there, certain fail, but we saw nothing that was alarming or anything like that right now. And, you know, like I say, if it costs you $50,000 a year to maintain a tank, you certainly don't want to paint it two years too early, especially two on the earth.
Question, those interior sections that are in contact with water that you said were neglected by the inspector, is that what the price here 260 includes also? Having that area taken care of?
Yeah, well, this price here was from a different tank, but, but yeah, absolutely. Yeah, that, all that would get sandblasted and painted and properly.
Right. That's what I heard.
And it's not, it's really not unusual to see that. A lot of new tanks, five years after they're up, the belly on this type of tank, and the access tubes.
Neglected.
Yeah, they're just neglected. They're hard to access, it's hard for an inspector to get up there and take mill readings and stuff like that, so.
So, will you be preparing an actual quote for ours?
Well, our recommendation was that, in two years, we would come in, we would do a washout inspection.
At which time do you?
At that time, we would do that. And then, as far as like the vent, and the overflow, and the guy cables, if you decided you wanted us to do that, we would give you a proposal. It would probably be those numbers, and we would take care of that whenever you want us to.
Any other questions? Bruce, will you be able to get a copy of what his presentation tonight is, so that you have it to sit and read through, and I'm sure that Terry will go through it with you?
Sure. Thank you very much, Terry.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate the opportunity.
He gives you a little bit of something to look at later. Okay, thank you very much.
Do I need to relinquish mine?
You need to relinquish. I don't, to Bruce.
You just need to call me and go ahead.
Actually, yeah, so if you want to do, have any conversation, being as I'm here.
Oh.
Okay, so you're second on public plans, and you worked in person. If you want to have any discussion this evening, you can ask that. If not, if they want to wait and digest this, you know, and we all can watch this on the access channel to go through it one more time, to hear all the points that you brought up, so.
I had none of my pleasure, especially, so we have a good discussion.
Yeah, in particular, yes.
So, have any questions out there? Yes, sir.
Terry, would you be able to kind of do, put together some side-by-sides? I know that the two presentations we've seen are a little different, because they encompass different aspects of it.
Sure.
Would you could put some stuff together for a side-by-side? Just to talk about at the next meeting, and maybe your recommendations as well?
Sure.
That might be.
We'll do that.
I agree.
It's not me against Darryl. Actually, Darryl and I are good friends, and we've done work together.
Great, that's good to know.
Thank you.
Joe, thanks, Ed.
See you, Derek.
Yep, too.
I guess, any more questions? I guess I'll go ahead and reach out to this committee at 6:38.
Yep.
All right. Health and safety at 6:38 PM. And we've got traffic map changes from the letter that we received Tuesday. I, this was a lot to digest with this, and there was some discussion with it. I went and met with Jeff Dunn, that they had him run through all ten of them with me, just to explain them in more detail, so that I had a better understanding. And, you know, items one through six are what's mandated by the state's traffic study, which they had told us is all or none, we have to abide by their entire thing. So, these changes are essentially going back to what the state's requiring us to go back to. When you look at item number seven, which was the no parking on West Mansill Street, that's in front of Ohio Auto Parts now, back to their second driveway. And then, items eight and nine would be removing the turn lanes from the stoplights that were removed. And then, item 10 was the one that I had a little bit of question about, and it says to establish 127 feet of eastbound turn lane on Mary Street at North Sandusky in front of Subway there. And so, I, it's a turn lane there, so I did some research and pulled out the current entry into the traffic map, and there is already one there, but it actually says, from 1989, it says that it will run the entire block from Sandusky to Poplar. And so, Jeff said, well, his intention was to just make that 127 feet. So, we're really not establishing it, but we're changing. And so, that prompted me, I asked Kelly Patterson how hard it would be in the future for when we're looking at traffic map changes, to actually see what the entry would look like, rather than just a number on a letter. She said that would not be a problem at all. I said, I think that would help all of us understand a little bit better what we were doing. So, I don't know, in this instance, if we want to have her type this list up that way, or if we want to do that going forward in the future. You know, I'll leave that up to us to discuss. Mark and Andy, what your thoughts are.
I agree. I think we should have it written exactly the way we're going to prove it. Not this way, and then it's written a different way, and we're proving it one way in our mind, and it's not actually that way.
I agree.
If we have it written exactly how it's legally going to be done, then I won't have any qualms about it, because we can say this, but then, there's typo or something in here, and it's not right. I don't want to...
No room for error.
Yeah, we can always request that from the Traffic Commission, that they provide the necessary information. Yeah, I think that's no...
So, I'd like to then, I don't know if we need to take any action, other than just a simple communication of that saying, we'd like to see it in an entry form, like it will be actually on the traffic map.
Sure, the service director will...
Use one of the... Okay. I've already talked to Kelly, so she's anticipating that. Okay. Also, wanted to share, if you hadn't had a time to read the newspaper yet today, about the ambulance district opened their bids.
Yes.
And so, we had two companies that submitted bids. First one...
Excuse me, the ambulance is in committee already, so, tonight, we're allowed to bring up any discussion item that we've got in committee, isn't that what you said? Okay, just so we make sure that everybody understands that.
Okay. The first bid was from a company called Portsmouth Ambulance, and they gave a bid of an increasing amount from years one, two, and three. Year one was $199,200. Year two was $225,000. Year three was $249,000. Those three added up are, for the three-year contractor, $673,800. Or if you averages out over the three years, it's $224,600 a year average. I'm waiting to hear exactly what our percentage is, because hot township pulled out, because they're still, they're also covered by Yonah East. So, I'm waiting on the county auditor to tell us what our per capita percentages is.
But in the past, it's been around 50, what is it?
It was in the 50s when, the last time we painted, but that was when we had a higher population here.
Yeah.
And at the last time that I checked, we were going to be right around 46.
That's what I...
So, I did my math, 46%, and of that, year one, our portion of that, at 46%, would be $91,632. So, that's the first bid. The second bid, the second bid, was by Life Support Team, which is our current provider, and their bid was for an annual amount of $3,799,999 for the three-year total, totaling $11,399,966.
They obviously don't want to come back.
So, I just wanted to share that with you.
I got a quick question for you, because you're an ambulance guy, and you may know this answer. I was just kind of baffled by yesterday, because I had a bad sense of direction on my way home from Cleveland. I ended up having to come through Marion, Route 4. We won't even explain that one, but regardless, yeah, regardless, I'm coming up Route 4, as I see this ambulance coming down Route 4, lights on, coming down the road. I pulled off to the side, and I noticed a life support ambulance going by, and he heads towards Marion with the lights on. I mean, not normal, it's probably 60, 65 at most, tops, you know? What would be the reason for that?
Inter-facility transport, most likely from our hospital to Marion or Columbus Hospital. Things that can't be handled here at the small tertiary hospital, like a heart attack, or a stroke, or trauma, things like that. Just not too often, I guess I see them heading towards Marion, because usually, we light flight into a bigger hospital. Very common, actually.
First time I've ever seen it in years.
So, I just wanted to pass that on to everybody. The ambulance district is having a meeting on July 2nd, which is not a normal, normally scheduled meeting, if they call it as a special meeting, at which point, they're going to have a presentation, and then possibly award the bid. I don't know if that's...
Question for you, do you know anything about Portsmouth?
I do. They are a family-owned company. They are the largest ambulance provider in the state of Ohio, a large private provider. They have, and I have to remember, I think it's 93 or 96, the ambulances that are licensed with the state by the transportation board. Family-owned business. They have several other item one contracts there around the state. They're not just enforcement, obviously, maybe some ambulances have high reputation amongst the people they've got, provide service for.
Any other discussion, any discussion about how they were anticipating everybody paying for this, or were there...
So, yeah, the, on top of us, the other townships that currently do not have an EMS levy, Besar's township, Chatfield, Dallas, Sandusky, Lake Inverwestown, the other six that do not, they all had agreed that for year one, they could self-fund it, but they're going to anticipate a levy. And that's part of what they're going to discuss at the next meeting, whether they're going to try to do that individually or collectively as a group.
Okay, because I know that that's been brought up as a possible, possibly, is it legal to do it that way? And I know there's legalities involved, and whether each individual entity is on their own, or if it's the entire district itself that has to see the levy. So, I mean, there's a lot of questions that need to be answered.
I believe I got the idea, I don't want to speak out of turn here, but I got the idea that they're anticipating doing a district white levy.
You actually have to have something to say.
No, I, I believe that the only thing that's authorized is a district white levy. I mean, I think the ORC is specific in that any district, the fees have to be uniform throughout the district. And I think the situation we have right now is questionable, but moving forward, the district white levies, in my opinion, under ORC, the only way it can be done.
So, this July 2nd meeting, you say that's coming up?
Sheriff's Office, 5:30 PM, in the lower level.
Everyone's invited?
Public is always invited. They do have it in their rules, that if any visitors want to speak, they're allowed in two minutes. If they would like longer than that, they're asked to notify at a time of your, I think, general hour, but theirs is a...
Don't think there's going to be any discussion on it.
So...
Well, I think that it opens up some other considerations, too, if it's going to be that much money a year, as to whether we're committed, I believe, right now.
We are, yes.
It opens up a lot of other questions at that price, $11,000 is not...
No, but I'll tell you, when we looked at what Lifestar's request was, was $211 a year, and so, this is actually less than that. And so, I was pleased by the number, to be honest with you. I was anticipating a little higher, knowing what it costs to provide that service. Any other items that anybody, that are open, that anybody wish to bring up?
The rental property.
I don't know if that is actually...
There is another thing here.
The rental property.
Yes, the rental property. Requirement.
That to you, we need some information from you.
Well, we have some information in the packet here.
Right, right.
That is for your reading pleasure, and the, uh, probably rather than trying to.
Well, see, if, if I could just briefly, I guess, um, there, there was a prior version that had been submitted to council back in fourteen. Um, in your packet tonight is, I, I took a minute to get through and updated that, and just kinda changed it and kind of did it. Um, so that's in the packet tonight. Mr. Truett.
We have a copy of two thousand fourteen, so we know what's been changed.
Yeah, I, I can print the copy down.
We can get that to you.
Or for those of us that are new since two thousand fourteen.
Well, it.
I'm there too, so I may.
And to be clear, the two thousand fourteen one wasn't passed, it was just one that was proposed in the committee.
Yes, it never went anywhere.
Yeah, right. So, but, yeah, it was.
Can we get a copy down?
Is there anything that you wanna discuss about it, or are you just giving this us to?
Just give it to you guys to, to take a look at it. As, as you know, rural properties and the quality thereof have been a significant issue. Um, similar to the vacant and abandoned buildings. We have, we have a partial building collapse right now, active. Sinkhole developing on each side of the property. One will affect a neighboring resident, the other, uh, demand to remind the wall of a church. Uh, that's a property that's been vacant as best we can tell since two thousand and eight. And, um, you know, it was previously a rental property. So, you know, the rental property registration does a couple things. One, it creates inspections in a sense of standard of minimum housing standard. For empty, and vacant buildings, obviously, is just to keep those in, in check and to, um. Help fund the increased cost of enforcement, police, fire, and all those things that vacant buildings.
So it's on the sake of communication, or just conversation there? With what you have here and kind of what's your ideas, what would that change with the situation happening now with that structure on Woodline?
Uh, the structure on Woodline had been a vacant building and the vacant building ordinance that is currently in front of the committee. Would have generated roughly twenty-three thousand dollars in vacant building registration fees over the years, which would be more than enough to pay for the cost of demolition right now if that over doesn't, uh, doesn't fund that.
So right now, right now, if he doesn't fund that, we have to take care of that, to make the, the danger.
And, and assess it to the value of the land, and the value of that land is probably close to nil because it's not big enough to, to build upon. And it's in, you know, it, it's a question for our little kids. You know, so our, our, our little kids get to see that every day.
And the question is also, uh, will, if we work on this, you'll have ideas like fees?
Yeah, there's fees proposed in that, uh, annual registration fees, annual inspection fees, late fees, uh, penalties for non-adherence. Uh, and it reverts back to, uh, our current, uh, building, fire, electrical codes, and property maintenance codes for standards for residential properties. One of the things that Chief Callow pointed out to you on the days when he's here, is that there are very, uh, limited rules in the state of Ohio for one, two, and three family structures. So, um, those things are kind of, you know, flip seas, and anything can happen. Um, the vacant building ordinance, which is, you know. I don't know, accompaniment to that, um, the building is more designed just to make sure that we know what's vacant. You know, we know if there's a fire or safety forces involved, we know that it's vacant, we know that it's registered, we know that it's secured well.
Referring back to the Echo Berry building.
Referring back to that one, I mean, well, that, and, and like this building with the, where the, uh, the foundation has completely collapsed. Had there been a fire there, and a fireman rushed in, and the floor falls out underneath of them, um, then we've very, like we got severely, severely injured firemen. Or even just with, um, with, with our police, I mean, I, Mr. Fairmore can tell you how many times he's probably been in an abandoned building with an overdose victim, or, or something along those lines. And, uh, there's a significant cost, uh, both to the community, to the neighboring properties, uh, and, and just to our safety forces and, and the additional risk. Of managing those, those abandoned properties. And you have to look at what some of those abandoned properties do to our community. If you're a business owner, you're coming into town, um, to look at, uh, look at this as a place to, place your business. Every entrance on the way to town is, uh, has abandoned buildings.
So we will, um, each peruse this and bring it back up in two weeks and ask any further questions, and you give us any further statements about that, you know?
Yeah, yeah, certainly. If you have anything specific you want to look at or address to any of those ordinances, you know, they'll hesitate to call me, you know, Mr. Craving Hall.
Just going back to this issue, I think, you know, there's obviously gonna be some examples of some vacant and abandoned structures that are terrible condition and present safety concerns. But then I think that we also have to look at. Those are on one end of the spectrum, and there's properties that are gonna be on the other end of the spectrum, that are vacant and are not a throwaway property. And empty lots in our neighborhood also affect the community visual appeal as well. So I think, you know, we run the risk of running up fees to a point on some of these things that that property never becomes usable to anybody. Because it would end up in a tax sale of probably a point where no one would be able to, would reasonably want to invest in bringing that house back into usability. And not every one of the houses, uh, that ends up in this place is necessarily a structure that has to be torn down from a structural standpoint. Um, and that's my concern. I guess I don't wanna see us create too many gaps in the, in the neighborhoods with, you know, what, what a house may not need to be torn down. So I think we gotta look at both ends of that. I think obviously there's gonna be examples, like you're pointing out, the worst of the worst. But there's also, you know, the, the other side of that is that there's gonna be some houses that, you know, that end up being scrapped that could have otherwise been salvaged.
And, and I, and I guess the, the, the point of that, when you look at what other committees, communities have done with their vacant building ordinances, one is to combat specifically the zombie house situation with banks and things like that. Um, the other thing is, is to incentivize those houses getting back into the market and used. For example, the one I'm living on is seconded for ten years because there was no cost to allow it to sit there materially. So having, having these programs in place provides an incentive to put those things back into productive use, um, rather than just let them sit there until they, you know, fall apart.
Like Roger Street.
Yeah.
So will this help private, uh, make the priority to be able to get funds for what we had just passed through economic development? You know, uh.
T I O C, uh.
Yeah.
You see, yeah.
I mean, will this pop it to the top of?
I would think they're all connected, you know, loosely to where if you know that if you don't do something, you're gonna have these other penalties or fines. I, I think that's an incentive, that's all.
But, you know, if somebody picks up one of these houses for very little money and invests, you know, sixteen, eighteen, twenty thousand dollars in it, and, and our rule say that we'll pick up the, you don't have to pay any property taxes on it for, you know, the next fifteen years or ten years. Whatever it is, that's a big savings to, uh, to someone to do it. I mean, that's a good incentive.
It makes it an investment to you too, when you come into this area. You actually have a positive equity investment for something that you didn't know.
And I think the important part of this is not to look at it as a penalty so much on the property owner as it is for the safety, like you mentioned, of, of our safety forces and then the, the neighborhood. So I think we, you know, we'll all take the time to look through it and.
This is, uh, at the very beginning, it's for residential. We're talking residential, we're not talking commercial.
That's for rental, rental properties is any, any property.
Any rental property?
Yes, yes. And the vacant building has different standards for residential and commercial.
Okay, okay.
So is this vacant property, or is this res, this rental property?
That's for rental properties.
So we're not really talking vacant in here?
Well, Mr. McCue, in front of, the, the vacant building ordinance is also in committee, so they're, they're both, they're both there. They, they've kind of worked in here.
Okay, those back now.
Yeah, you can do one without the other.
Yeah.
You wanna bring that next, to the next committee as well?
Yeah, I, I think I said it out a couple weeks ago, but I'll say it up again.
Okay.
So how much difference is this than private property? I mean.
There is a, there is no registration for private property.
No, but I mean, we're saying that you wanna adhere to the guidelines for this, or you want it to be, to make it so it's a registration? You wanna, you wanna be able to register houses?
Rental properties.
Rental properties, not just how.
Yeah, just, rental property, rental property, it just says that for standards for registering rental properties and, and requires that rental properties adhere to the property maintenance code as well.
You look like you got a question.
No, I, I, it's just, you know, I mean, it just seems like, I, I thought, you know, all properties fell under the property maintenance code. You're supposed to, aren't you?
They, they, they do, but this, for this, um, specifically requires that any rental properties meet certain minimum conditions, and requires inspections to make sure that they meet those conditions. So they don't slip through the cracks. One of, one of the problems that we have is, we have a lot of people in our community that are. Desperate for housing and, and live on the margins with, with very minimal, if any, income. I mean, the, the number of people that have absolutely zero income is, is a serious limit. But, uh, those people are in desperate circumstances, often, and it is not uncommon for, to see those individuals, um. Live wherever they can live and be taken advantage of in, in doing so, um, living in, in children, you know, you know, somebody wants to rent a crappy place because they're a heroin addict, I don't really care. But we start putting kids in those, um, and there's no standard in the community, um, to say, you know, this is just unacceptable. That, that's where things become a problem. Those people are, many people in that position are so desperate for a place to live. That they're afraid to speak out, they're afraid to call us and say, hey, you know, I, I, you know, whatever is my major problem. I've seen basements full of sewage and people living in a, it was in a house not so long ago where the, uh, family had taken trash bags to cover the vents. Because the sewage, um, was, was coming up through the vents, because the whole family, the kids, and, um, you know, they're probably after the property, they fucking called the board, and, and they wouldn't see it. So those, the, the rental property registration, which requires inspections, takes the burden from, from those people that, that feel that they can't, they can't ask for help. And puts it on, on the city, really, that, that we're gonna step into the place for them, and, and we're gonna, we're gonna set some standards, we're gonna set some community standards, and we're gonna enforce those standards. So that, that's really the emphasis behind it from my perspective.
I, the other thing is, with this, if we set it right, that it could be beneficial to those who are on low income, that if the house meets certain criteria. It could be like, um, Visires Estate or. Uh, what, I can't do the, the.
Low income housing.
Low, metro, metro housing.
Yeah.
Metro housing can be approved for anybody. That's all about the landlord just going there and.
But this could.
Metro ha, the last time I talked to metro housing, they had over a one-year waiting list. They're, they're, they're desperate for inventory. But we have many properties that don't qualify for metro housing because they, they don't meet minimum standards. I haven't, this does not, um. This does not incorporate metro housing standards, um, but.
That are restricted.
They're, they're, they're strict.
Right, right.
And so we're not trying to do that. I mean, I'd, I'd love to say that we should just adopt metro housing standards, but, but that may be, may be too strict. But those property owners that, that, you know, want steady guaranteed rent, I mean, you know, if you're willing to put the work into your property, you bring up the metro standards, if you're desperate for the income.
All right.
Any, anything else? Bruce, anything else?
No, I don't.
Mark?
Yeah.
All right. Uh, we will recess, health and safety at seven oh five P M.
Okay. Cladings. Street and alley vacations at Harman Park.
I'll take that.
You'll take that?
I'll take that.
I thought it was for to Jeff.
Well, and, and Jeff and I talked earlier, we're, we're waiting on a few things, A E P, placement of holes, and some things like that to have some specifics. So that we can kind of finalize some drawings for it to you, because we don't wanna, we don't wanna try to piecemeal at this part, that part, the, all those sorts of things. So we wanna try and put it all together at one time, so basically, we're waiting on some final drawings.
They will.
In some of the parts that go to those final drawings, so.
Would, would it probably also be who us to wait until the old water plant was demolished before we vacated, for instance, Water Street, just to leave that street while that was going on?
Well, uh, yes, yes and no. The, the process takes so long because of the public hearings and some other stuff like that, so we're just trying to.
We don't need a public hearing. I don't think we need a public hearing to do that, as long as it's the city requesting it.
Just that, that, but there's others.
Company.
Yeah, um, the, the, there's the other side of Land Street.
Okay.
And there's, you know, some things are going over there. But, yeah, but, yeah, we can do it pretty quick on just, on just a large street, but, um. You know, we can kind of just, we'll do that, polls and some, there's some right of ways with A E P and stuff like that that we have to do.
Yeah, I know we've got that one land that property that we can't do any development on for another two years.
Yeah.
So that's why I thought, well.
But in a grassy field, the kids are across the top of probably U R I.
So you, we need more information.
Yeah.
On clarifying.
We hope to have that too.
Well, that's a better map, so then you also have the requirements, uh, that we dug out, we got out of our office, uh, for, uh, street and alley location requests, what things have to be followed. So, um, you can read up on that.
Okay. All right, well, if there's no other questions on this part, let's move on to the new zoning.
Andy's got a question. Oh, I'm sorry. I just had a quick question on the, on the alleys that are being vacated. Um, do you know what timeframe that would be as far as when they're going to go ahead with that? I mean, would it be relatively immediate if they, if that's approved? Cause I know that sometime the, if they're not gonna use them as a field, they're, they have been using that as overflow parking. Um, and it's on a Saturday, there's a lot of cars parked in that area over there. So I just wondered if, uh. If we're losing, if we're, we're gonna lose a lot of parking over there, uh, that might, if we're not gonna be using it as a field. I mean, cause if, unless it's leveled for soccer fields, it's probably not gonna be.
I was under the understanding part it was gonna be parking lot.
Okay.
Off the front.
Okay.
But I haven't seen the drawing from the soccer.
So I didn't under, I didn't fully understand what exactly they're doing with the alleys there, and I didn't know what.
I don't think we're ready to do anything till we find out all that answers to all those questions.
Yeah, and I think that's part of it, just kind of redesigning the whole, the whole thing, make sure we got a clear plan.
All right, we will wait for more information. All right, new zoning district that Mr. Pope brought up.
Um, actually, after talking with, uh, Mr. Ratliff and Mr. Rothdass, um, there is, uh, in the codified ordinance, it's eleven fifty-seven point oh four, it has to deal with newly annexed areas. Um, it's also in your packet. Um, basically, we, we need to just make a small change to, um, the, in the first sentence, it says. Territory which is annexed into the city of Visires, subsequent to the effective date of this ordinance shall, upon the effective date of the annexation, currently it states, be zoned into the R E District. Which is our residential estate district. Um, after, like I said, discussing with Mr. Rothdass and Mr. Ratliff. The change that we would like to see is, is it would read, territory which is annexed into the city of Visires, subsequent to the effective date of this ordinance shall, upon the effective date of the annexation, be an unzoned district. And then within three months from the date of annexation, the planning commission would have time to set forth the standards for that district. So rather than write up a whole new, we could just make a change to. So rather than write up a whole new, we could just make a change to what we currently have on the books, which would be able to incorporate, in a sense, what I was wanting to accomplish for, in a sense, a newly annexed area. Or in the future, if we decide to have a annex again. My main reason for this is, is a lot of the areas, if we were to ever annex at this point forward, whenever that point may come or that date would appear, they're little more rural areas where, you know, you may necessarily be allowed to burn trash in your barrel outside or, you know, have a couple goats in a pen or, or something to that effect. I, I don't want to see it where we're allowing, you know, an entire hog barn or something crazy like that to be annexed into the city, but, you know, some of these little rural areas just on the outskirts allow them to do basically what they're doing currently right now without having to make any changes to their daily lives but still be able to be annexed into the city if they would like to be. Like I said, in the future, whenever that date would arise, I'd just like to have it already into the code so that way we don't have to restructure and do things when that time would arise.
So you're suggesting here that this will go to the planning commission within three months of the request for, for them to determine what, what type of area that could be?
Right, absolutely. And I want this for just newly annexed areas. If, you know, there's an area that's already annexed, you know, we can only, at that point, they could apply to the V Z A for conditional use or conditional allowance, or, you know, something to that effect. But basically, just for newly annexed areas, like I said, just to allow them to keep doing basically what they're doing right now and not changing that. But at the same time, allow the planning commission to set standards, you know, you can't build a hog barn there, you know, we don't want anything like that. And at the same time, you know, like I said, in the future down the road, whenever we would approach the annexation, I think it would just make it a lot, a lot easier for that process. Than, you know, for instance, areas like overlanders out here, or, you know, we're trying to, we've already somewhat annexed out that area and was kind of, you know, hot, hot here and there. You know, maybe it would entice overlanders to want to annex in because of the fact that they can keep doing what they're doing in their daily operations back there and they don't have to change anything because now they're in the city limits. And that's just an example, just by the way, I'm saying that they're annexing.
Oh, I got a question, and so then they would come up with, with rules and regulations for unzoned property. Because what I would like to see is they able to see what, what the limitations are on residential RE versus unzoned. I mean, we, we have a whole list of, of rules and regulations that states, you know, what, what's allowed, what's not allowed, so how do you do unzoned?
Unzoned would just be that it doesn't fall within any of the zoning categories if we have no rules and regulations. The residential estates district is very, pretty limited. It allows for basic agricultural use and, you know, single family, single fam, single family residences. So, you know, if somebody, right now, if, if there was a gas station that, that wanted to annex into the city, they would have to annex, our rules require that they annex in as a residential estate, they wouldn't, they wouldn't qualify. And so then, three months later, you'd have to have the hearings. This just gives you that grace period. By changing it to unzoned, they're coming with no category, then it gives us that grace period to take the planning commission and do a list of property. And determine what, what the best use is and those sorts of things.
That further explains.
So it's something, I think we're looking right now and just taking, you know, read this, take it under consideration and we're not looking to make a decision.
No, there's no emergency, there's nothing on there. We're not looking to annex any.
Do you have a question? All right, well then, with that, I will, unless there's any other questions, I will adjourn at seven forty-five. So, any public participation? All right. So I will ask.
Before we adjourn, do you want me?
There will be a special service committee meeting, I'll announce it tomorrow to the media and everyone else. Tomorrow, Monday at five P M, service committee, this will be for outside of the city water rates and tapings. And also for the bulk, water, bulk station, bulk station, that's on the, we.
At what time?
Monday at five.
Monday at five.
Service committee, yeah. Open to the public.
Please come. Put that in there, please come. Uh, all right, I.
Oh, go ahead.
Well, I was just wanting to know if we, if, is there a way that we could contact the, the water haulers that, that were using our facility, that has since quit using our facility?
Well, I have a question first and then maybe that'll answer your question. You put the bulk rate, I'm talking about the bulk water rate that we sell to like the county, and in the future, we're going to Nevada. That's the bulk rate I'm talking about, not the bulk station.
You were here the other night.
We, we.
We actually asked to discuss the bulk station as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
I missed that part, sorry.
I'll fill you on that.
Okay, all right, so that answered that question too.
But, so, I agree with you, I think that it may be who us to ask them. There's what it came up with, was several of the bulk haulers that have stopped using our facility because of the complaints of the slow fill time. We want to just talk about if there's any way we can correct that to, to retain their business. I'd be a favor to have them here to hear.
Don't say, because I was contacted by one man, he said he purchased a million gallons of water last year.
And he said.
And now he's not going to. No.
Well, we can talk about it tonight, I can tell you that.
Can't talk about it now.
Okay. Now, mind, we'll talk about it one day.
Okay.
All right, I'll make your motion.
Do I have a second?
So. And we adjourn at seven, seven?